Everyone, welcome to the regular council meeting of Wednesday, August 13. Let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Okay, thank you. Confirmation of the agenda. Owen.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of August 13, 2025, as amended by adding the following items: Chief Administrative Officer memo regarding development charges.
Move on to secondary. Deputy Mayor Barber and who did I see second and Counselor Barber. All those in favor. As Carrie, thank you. Item four, Declaration of pecuniary interest. Is there any? Allegations, we have a committee of adjustment this evening, so first we need a resolution to recess the council meeting and commence the committee of adjustment. Owen.
That council does now recess and commence a committee of adjustment meeting at 6:16 PM.
Move on to secondary. Counselors Rozier and Counselor Chapman. All right, all those in favor. And that is Carrie, thank you.
The committee of adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convened to consider application for minor variance A03-25. Additional information related to the applications is available for inspection between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM weekdays at the Town of Elmer Town Hall. Sign-written submissions are accepted by the Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearings, and such submissions shall be available for inspection by any interested party. If a party who is notified does not attend the hearing, the committee can proceed, and the party is not entitled to any further notice of the hearings. Submissions or requests for notice can be sent to clerks@town.elmer.on.ca. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who have attended, who are represented at the hearing, and those who have filed a written request with the Secretary for notice of the committee's decision. The committee will receive input in the following order: presentation of the staff report by the Manager of Planning and Development, agent or applicant, the public, and staff and clerk. Application 03-25 is made by PNJ Properties Incorporated as the property owner for the property known municipally as 45 and 47 Forest Street in the Town of Elmer. The purpose of this variance is to reduce the minimum interior side yard width for the proposed lot line separating the existing semi-detached units for the covered unenclosed decks located at the rear of each semi-detached unit. The variance is required to facilitate the severance of the semi-detached units into individual parcels.
Thank you. The Manager of Planning and Development, please provide her report.
Thank you, your worship. Figure one shows the location of the subject lands. The semi-detached dwelling is located on the north side of Forest Street. Residential uses surround the property with the CN rail corridor to the north. Figure two shows the proposed minor variance. As already mentioned, this variance is a requirement to facilitate the severance. It's a condition of the severance. And just to explain it in a little bit more detail, when you look at that drawing, you'll see the decks located right there, yes, where the cursor is. What it is, is that the decks are touching. There is a wooden wall separating the two decks. The decks were built together. The footings have separation between them, but the actual deck wall is adjoining, as well as the roof line for these decks is adjoining. So unfortunately, that's why this variance is required for this application or for this proposed severance. Moving on to planning evaluation in terms of consultation, no comments of concern were submitted from staff or from public agencies, and no comments received from the public. Moving on to the four tests of the variance. The first test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan? And yes, it does. This semi-detached dwelling is permitted within the medium density designation, and the proposed minor variance doesn't contravene the official plan policies. The second test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? And yes, it does. A deck attached to a semi-detached dwelling is permitted within the R2 zone that applies to this property. As already mentioned, the deck footings do not touch. There is 0.61 meter separation between the deck footings. However, since the decks project closer to the new lot line than the footings, and the deck share, as I mentioned, a common dividing wall, the existing interior side yard setback between the units is zero meters. The existing interior side yard setback between the lot lines is minimal, as this only impacts the decks. There is still setbacks maintained with these two units through this severance. Except for the request to permit no interior side yard setback between the decks, the proposal meets all other R2-1 special provision zone and general provision regulations. Third test is the variance requested desirable for the appropriate orderly development and use of the lands and buildings. And yes, it is. The intent of establishing minimum interior side yard setbacks is to provide adequate separation between buildings and lot lines and enable a property owner to be able to provide maintenance to a building without trespassing onto a neighboring property. For this variance, as I mentioned, the existing connected decks are an extension of the common vertical wall separating the units. This has been in existence since this semi-detached dwelling has been constructed in 2021, and this will not impact rear access to each of the units. And the fourth and final test is the variance minor in nature. And yes, it is. The impact from the proposed variance is minimal with respect to the environment municipal functions and surrounding property owners. So in conclusion, it's the planning staff's opinion that the proposed application for a minor variance is desirable for the appropriately appropriate and orderly development use of the lands, meets the intent and purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw regulations, and recommend that the request for the proposed application for minor variance A03-25 be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is the applicant present either here or online? No? No, thank you. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak to this, do so now and give your name and approach the podium. Seeing no one, did we receive any other communication concerning the application?
We have not.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counsel Ryan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a question. We've passed one of these before, right? They seem to be kind of common on the back of those duplexes, right?
No. So this is a unique situation with this application. And just to explain, normally, we allow within the zoning bylaw a zero meter separation between semi-detached units as long as there is the vertical wall separating them. The situation for this one is that there is no extension of the vertical wall of these dwelling units. It's just the, basically, the decks were connected by the owner, and they're asking for relief from the zoning bylaw in order to be able to proceed with this severance. So yeah, this is a bit unusual of a situation.
Seeing no further discussion, the committee will now consider the following resolution. Can you read the resolution, Owen?
That report Plan 12-25, Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Minor Variants A03-25, respecting 45 and 47 Forest Street, be received, and that the application for minor variance A03-25 seeking relief from Section 93D of the zoning bylaw, that the minimum interior side yard width shall be zero meters to the proposed lot line separating the units from the existing covered unenclosed deck located at the rear of each of the semi-detached units be approved.
Thank you. Move on to secondary. Counsel O'Slashen and Counsel Barber, sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. As Carrie, thank you. We have another item under the committee of adjustment. Clerk, read the resolution.
The next item is Application 04-25, made by Kim and Matthew Park as the owners of the property known municipally as 95 Queen Street in the Town of Elmer. The purpose of this variance is to add two additional residential units to a single detached dwelling with increased floor area and reduced parking requirements.
Okay, thank you. The Manager of Planning and Development, please provide her report.
Okay, thank you, your worship. So the application you have before you, as Owen's already mentioned, it's to, the variance is to be able to add two additional residential units to an existing single detached dwelling. And what the variance is required, it's to be able to increase the floor area for the additional residential units and reduce the parking requirements. In the Town of Elmer zoning bylaw, for additional residential units, the maximum floor area for an additional residential unit must be a maximum of 40% of the main floor's ground floor area. So in this circumstance, the owners are requesting an increase in the maximum floor area from 40% to 54% of the main dwelling unit. And this is for the additional residential unit to be located on the second floor of the dwelling, as well as they're asking for an increase in the maximum floor area from 40% to 67% of the main dwelling unit for an additional dwelling unit to be located in what is would be a former attached garage. As well as, because these additional residential units also have parking requirements, which is one space per unit, we need to address some of the parking deficiencies that are going to result from this development. So what this means is that the owners are requesting for a decrease in the minimum parking space length from 5.5 meters to 3.82 meters, and an increase in parking area width from 10 meters to 11.89 meters. And this is for an existing parking area located along the exterior side yard of the property, along Queen Street South, as well as they're also requesting for a decrease in the minimum parking space length from 5.5 meters to 4.48 meters to be able to establish a new parking area at the front of the home along South Street East. And this is to be able to provide one parking space in this area. As mentioned, the property is located at 95 Queen Street South. Figure one shows the location of the lands. It's located at the northeast corner of Queen Street South and South Street East. Figure two shows the proposed minor variance. So moving on to consultation, the application was circulated to applicable town staff and public agencies. The Director of Operations and Infrastructure provided comments and indicated that he has no concerns. There is the existing curb cut for the existing parking area at Queen Street South. The curb cut is already oversized. The proposed driveway width can be increased without the need for an additional curb cut, and the total lengths for the parking stalls are adequate from the back of the sidewalk to the front of the parking space. As well, the parking stalls on Queen Street South are existing. The proposed parking on South Street East will be a minimum of 5.5 meters from the back of the sidewalk to the front of the stall. The application was also circulated to all the neighboring property owners, and no comments are received. Moving on to the four tests of the minor variance, the first test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan? And yes, it does. The property is designated low-density residential. There is an existing single detached dwelling on this home, and additional residential units are permitted within a single detached dwelling, up to two units. So moving on to the second test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? And yes, it does. The property is zone residential type 1, R1, which permits the single detached dwelling that's in existence, as well as the proposed additional residential units. It's important to note that the intent of establishing a maximum floor area to be a percentage of the main dwelling unit for additional residential units is to ensure that these units do remain as secondary to the primary dwelling unit. The intent of establishing a minimum parking space length is to ensure that a variety of vehicle sizes can be accommodated within a parking space, and a minimum and a maximum parking space area width has been set to ensure that parking doesn't take up all the remaining area on a lot, and that there's still ability to have landscaped area. So with the exception of the requested variances, the proposal meets all other R1 zone and general provision regulations. Moving on to the third test, is the variance requested desirable for the appropriate and orderly development and use of the lands and buildings? And yes, it is. This variance will enable the owners to maximize the value in the use of the lands while also providing greatly needed housing units here in the Town of Elmer. The increase in maximum floor area for the two proposed additional residential units will enable the owners to convert the entire second floor, as well as the entire former attached garage, into additional residential units, which will create good-sized units for an individual or a small family household. The deficiency in parking space length along Queen Street South is existing. This is the existing parking area that has already been established for decades for this existing home. And as I already mentioned, there's an existing oversized curb cut for the parking area, which will accommodate the increase in parking area width. The proposed deficiency in parking space length for a new parking area along South Street East will not impact the function of the sidewalk, as per the comments from our Director of Operations and Infrastructure. And the fourth and final test is the variance considered minor in nature. And yes, it is. The impact is minimal with respect to the environment municipal functions and surrounding property owners. So in conclusion, it's the planning staff's opinion that the proposed application for the minor variance is desirable for the appropriate development and use of the lands, and meets the intent and purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw, and recommend that the request for the proposed minor variance A04-25 be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Is the applicant present either in the audience or online? If so, do they wish to speak? I see that there is somebody online. Could you give your name, please, and go ahead?
Yes, we are, your worship. Thank you very much.
Yeah, hi, it's Kim here. Thank you for taking the time this evening. Yeah, I would just like to say that we feel that they're good quality units. We're really hoping to have people that would like to stay. We don't want a constant turnover, and we feel that with the layout as it is and the flow, it would make very comfortable living accommodation for families and people that are looking to, you know, be responsible and be a part of the community. So that's what we're looking for, and I just feel like that extra space would allow people to kind of, you know, grow into the units and not outgrow and need to keep moving on. And we are keen to have good people that kind of, you know, involve themselves in the community. So I think the size is pretty important for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next item then, is there any members of the public present who would wish to speak to this? Seeing none, could, did we receive any further communication on this, Owen?
No, we have not.
Very good. Then Counsel, questions? Counselor Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How big are these units? And how big of families are you expecting to have? Because one vehicle per family is very minimal. And so if there's more vehicles, where do you intend to park them?
So the top unit will be an open plan bachelor. So we would anticipate a young, a single person or a couple, and that would be it. Because there's no, there's no separate bedroom. It's all open. So they have one parking spot. And then the main floor has three bedrooms and two parking spots. So we feel that that would be, you know, a younger family. And the bedrooms are pretty small, so I don't think you'd have teenagers necessarily there with vehicles. And then the garage would be two bedrooms, again, not huge, but one parking space for those. We would anticipate, again, a mom and dad and small young children. That's kind of our expectation, or even an older couple without children anymore.
Somebody else had their hand up to ask a counsel? No one else? Oh, Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. To Heather, if I may, you touched in your, on, in your report about the parking space size, one a little more than 12 feet, the other one a little over 14 feet. Can you just help counsel understand the reasoning why those numbers are, what the numbers are?
Okay, through you or to you, Deputy Mayor Barber. The parking area along Queen Street South is an existing parking area. That is the maximum length that can be accomplished based on the location of the dwelling. That length goes right, basically, right up to where the foundation of the home is, and the same along the front yard on South Street East as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel DeRozier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just echoing the thoughts of fellow council members here with concerns to parking, I think we definitely do need more housing options in the community, but this area specifically is right in the vicinity of Assumption Catholic School, very, very busy in that area for parking with pickups, drop-offs, school activities. So if we do have any concerns as a council as far as parking goes, I do think it's smart of us to discuss it now and come up with solutions rather than have a situation unfold later.
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor. That being said, is there any, because that is pretty tight for parking. Realistically, most, most people in Elmer drive, adult-wise, to work. Ideally, there would be two more parking spaces available probably for that location. Is there any other spots, like, could you move it? Could you add on to the side, like, cut the curb more? Or is that, is that too, too much to do? Or too big of an area, sorry?
Carrie.
The, that's a great question, and through, through your worship. The curb cut on Queen Street is, it would start to encroach on the actual corner there because it is on the corner of Queen and, is it adjacent, Street?
South Street.
And South Street. So we did measure it out, and it meets the minimums from the edge of pavement from the intersection. So if it goes any wider to the west, it would actually be encroaching on the intersection there and the minimum distance from the intersection. So the, the widths are kind of the maximum they could be for that lot.
Go ahead.
As far as, through you, Mr. Mayor, to everyone. As far as coming in from the laneway, there is a fence I see in the, in the satellite picture or in the overhead, but could you come up and go beside the garage? I guess is what it would be, to gain two more spots? Would that be an option for them if there was an issue in the future? Do they need a permit to do that? Or can they, can they make the laneway without cutting the curb? Can they come out and angle it and go beside so you could park two beside, like, the garage? Would that be a solution if there is an issue later on down the line?
If I may. So in the zoning bylaw, as well as the provincial legislation, allows for tandem parking, and that's normally what we see to be able to accommodate the parking for these additional residential units, so tandem being one behind the other. So if it does become an issue for the owners, they do have sufficient rear yard if they must to be able to, if they have to, to be able to put cars further into the backyard. And we're, in meeting with the owners out on the site and seeing the property firsthand, their intention was to be able to provide some yard space to the tenants so that they're hopeful they don't have to encroach into that rear yard, but there is that option available. And I also just want to speak to, we couldn't do a further curb cut on Queen Street South heading north because there is an existing hydro pole there, as well as the guide wires, and I saw that firsthand. It does start getting a little too close in that area as well.
Could I ask a question, if that's okay?
Sure.
With the proposed new driveway on South Street, is the, if, will we, we're quite open to widen that driveway to provide two parking spots there? If that's allowable in the, in the bylaws? I'm not quite sure, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I may. So we did look at that already. Terry and I have talked about this at length, so we have two things that we have to meet in addition to all these other requirements of the zoning bylaw. One being the site triangle, the second being the distance from the travel portion of the road, and I believe Terry said, you said it was nine meters at a 90-degree angle from the intersection. And it comes close. So it's, if you want to.
Yeah, it's from the, the edge of pavement. If you, if you carry the edge of pavement through from the intersection, it needs to be nine meters from, from that. So we scaled it off, and it, it's starting to encroach on that measurement. So you'd be, vehicles would be, you know, entering and exiting into the intersection, backing into the intersection, and that's, that's against the traffic and parking bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess in the end, there always could be additional parking in the backyard or to the north if there needed to be. That's what I've established in my head anyways. Thanks.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Chapman.
I look at this as a significant change in the floor space from what's allowed to what you're asking for. So I know that you said that you want to have maximum space to provide a, a space that people want to stay, but this is a significant amount. So I'm just wondering what the purpose of this is and how this works with the floor space of the lower level, because it's, it's quite significant.
Through you, your worship, if I may speak?
Certainly.
Okay. So again, as mentioned, this is an exist- So again, as mentioned, this is an existing home. So they're trying to take the existing floor plan that exists on this home. So taking the existing second floor, utilizing the existing second floor and all of the space up there as well as the attached former garage. I do want to note that this 40% is in our zoning bylaw. And it's actually a bit of an older regulation. It's been there for at least a good seven or eight years before the province brought in all of the additional residential use regulations. The province itself, within their regulations, do not regulate the floor space. It was a choice that, I guess, the council of the time made quite a few years ago in our zoning bylaw. This is an area I'm noticing, I'm thinking I perhaps maybe need to take another look at. Because I am, I have been seeing with many different proposals that applicants have been finding it challenging to stay under the 40%. Again, trying to work with the layout of existing homes we have here in the town.
May I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Then I guess we're ready to ask the question? State the resolution?
That Report Plan 1325 Planning Evaluation Report Application for Minor Variants A04-2595 Queen Street South be received, and that the application for minor variance seeking relief from the zoning bylaw as follows. That the maximum floor area shall be 54% of the main dwelling unit for an additional residential unit to be located on the second floor. Two, that the maximum floor area be 67% of the main dwelling unit for an additional residential unit in the former attached garage. Three, that the minimum parking space length shall be 3.82 meters for three additional parking spaces located along the exterior side yard. And four, that the minimum parking space length shall be 4.48 meters for one parking space located along the front lot line. And five, that the parking area width shall be 11.89 meters for the parking area for three parking spaces located along the exterior side yard. And that these be approved.
Okay, thank you. We have a mover and a seconder. Councilor Rahi and Deputy Mayor Barber. Okay, seeing no further comments or questions, all those in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. Now we will have a resolution to adjourn the committee of adjustment hearing.
That the committee of adjustment be adjourned at 6:45 PM, and that council reconvene.
Mover and seconder, Councilor Barber and Councilor De Rosier. All those in favor? Yes, carried. Thank you very much. Next item is 5.2 delegations. We have a delegation from Mr. John Claussen from Doorway Canada. Mr. Claussen, if you approach the podium, please. And just a few comments before you speak. When we have presentations, the presentations are, we ask you to make them 10 minutes only. And I know that you have met with quite a number of staff already, and you have met with me as well concerning these particular concerns and comments you have. And we wanted to give you a chance, we wanted to give council a chance to hear your concerns, basically. So anyway, proceed, please.
Well, I thank you very much for coming over to our place today. That was much appreciated. We want to put another building up in town. And it seems that there's difficulties maybe in some areas that we face. And so I went to, we went to Tilsonburg and inquired there. And there's a land available there by the railroad track on the right-hand side, commercial development land. They have a very sweet proposal because of the taxes and their development fees and so on. And I'm not a very good speaker. So I've asked Abe Geisberg if he would speak for me. Is that okay?
It's fine. Just have him give his name when he comes up.
Good evening. My name is Abe Geisberg. I'm one of the business owners in Elmer and surrounding. And we're, we've met as a group of business owners, and we're trying to help and bolster up each other's issues because we all seem to be going through them. So some of the things that we're going through on this is we're finding out that other communities are offering more incentives to move into their areas. And as far as the group that we have, I should note that some of the local businesses here, from New Hope, TriCorp, Doorway, Doorway Commercial, Remtech, Tyke Road Exteriors, BDR International, Crossroads Express, we represent 500 to 1,000 employees in this area. So it's more than just, you know, we're not trying to just complain. We're trying to see if there's a better roadmap that we can create in conjunction with council. But we're finding that in terms of tax control, there's definitely something there that we feel can give us more incentive to stay in this area. Development fees, my understanding is a lot of the development fees in the areas have been put in over the COVID times. And it was, it didn't yield a lot of conversation with the community at large. And now we're seeing the effects of the development charges. And some of these charges are fairly steep. They're different in different communities. For example, Tilsonburg is $6 a square foot. Elmer, I believe, is $9 a square foot, which is fairly substantial when you're talking 20, 50,000 square foot facilities that we're talking about putting up. We've also, our group has spoken with Rob Flack, the MPP. And through that discussion, he also feels that these development fees and charges are hindering and pushing away businesses that can further help our community. And I might add that this is a community that I've been part of since high school when your worship was my vice principal. And we, you know, we've been here, a lot of us have been here in the area. We do believe in this community. And what we're looking for is that the current approach of paying for items upfront and not having a discussion before we understand the full cost, we're trying to change that so it's a better roadmap for the people that are trying to establish businesses, trying to build onto their businesses. And we feel that there can be a better way, a better roadmap to do this. For example, John is left with getting a site plan or being asked for a site plan and pay for that and engineering costs prior to having a discussion whether this is even feasible. And we think that having discussions, fruitful discussions on what can be done in a community, what we can work with the counselors and the community on can be very beneficial. We don't want to look elsewhere. And the seeds that we plant now have a stay in 10 years or have us look in a different direction. Many of our businesses are multi-generational, community-driven businesses. And we're just looking for that better roadmap that can be created to help businesses grow and bring new businesses here while strengthening our communities. Every single one of us, we donate to soccer clubs, rugby teams. You know, I coach rugby, soccer for the community. Many of us are heavily involved. And it's, we really would like to see this community that we've grown up in be more active and just being prepared to listen and being active in a conversation to get a better roadmap on how we approach things. We don't like spending money upfront that may be wasteful, and that's what seems to be happening. More clear information on cost, it would be important. We are here to promote the employment, the spending, tourist activity, and basically the tax base that lets everybody here enjoy what we have in town from the parks, the overall community. I know the Mass Center is supposed to be coming in as well. Well, we're all part of that as well. And any kind of tax incentive, like Tilsonburg is offering, where they're offering a 10-year tax deferment. They're willing to negotiate land pricing. Their development fees are $3 a square foot less. Property taxes in the Tilsonburg area are cut in half to what we have, even without the 10-year tax deferment. We understand that we have mortar, concrete, foundation in locations now. We can't just up and leave. But it is important to note that there's a willingness to work with us. And our group is, you know, we've met a couple of times, and we plan on meeting some more. And we'd love to have a bigger representation in a town that we believe in. But we want the town to believe in us as well. So if there's anything we can do moving forward to help build that roadmap, to be not upfront, but more on paper, that we can understand what the cost would be as we plan for our futures and our organizations. I appreciate your time, your worship, and councilors. Is there anything else that I've missed?
I'd just like to say one thing. When the mayor was over there today, I think he was talking about that development fees could not be changed, maybe because they're set in law, or I'm not sure how that works. But he said there might be an opportunity for tax rebate or something like that. And I just don't know how we go from here. Like, would somebody be getting back to us with information on what we can do? Or how does that work?
Certainly, certainly, Mr. Claussen, we can get back to you with information. Very good. So I heard you say Abe Geisberg, by the way. I do remember you, but it wasn't in my office.
It wasn't in your office, too.
Different, right. But anyway, you know, certainly appreciate the fact that we have a group of developers here who are very much into the town of Elmer that we want to stay here. And certainly, we want you here, and we appreciate you being here. There are a number of things that we cannot change right now. I'm going to ask Andy in a few minutes to talk about the process and talk about why things are as they are. But believe me, we are trying our best to accommodate you and to speed things up. And I'm kind of, you know, kind of surprised to hear you say that the discussions are not happening because I think the process that we go through is to talk to developers and provide information in a speedy and transparent way. So that really is kind of surprising to me that you feel that way. And certainly, we will correct that if that's the case. But, you know, having a better conversation is certainly something that we want to happen. And having a better roadmap to what's happening is something we want to happen. As far as the charges go and the fees go and a whole bunch of other things go, our hands are really tied. But there's, you know, there's stuff on the horizon that might change. But so I will turn it over to Andy to make a few comments about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming as a delegation. Certainly, yes, we, I think there is a lot of discussion that's going to occur about community improvement programs and DICs, DC, sorry, here at the council over the next year. The federal government, the provincial government have already indicated that they intend to potentially legislate changes related to DCs. Elgin County has a current update to the community improvement program going forward. In respect to just some of the aspects with, like, Tilsonburg, I think if you went through the development process and got to a stage with their community improvement program, you're not going to see that type of outcome. They have specific criterias in CIP. So unless you're doing brownfield remediation or remediation of an existing building, usually you're not seeing it. But one of the things that I've been doing, certainly at Elgin County level, is encouraging them to look at all the comparable municipalities, everybody around us, for taxation, for CIP programs, and really try to come back and be more competitive here because we certainly want to support local businesses. We understand that local businesses here have a history, even though we're seeing booming times attracting new businesses here. We don't want to lose the existing providers. But there certainly will be an opportunity for CIP discussions, for potential changes to provincial or federal legislation. One aspect with the federal legislation is we don't want to get ahead of what the federal government might announce this fall. If they're going to automatically put a blanket reduction on DCs and then give us funding for that, we want to make sure we get the funding for the difference first before, and consider those aspects. But there are a lot of things. One thing that is very essential for our planning department is to see some level of design on a building. Like, if you ever intend to build a building, we need to know what is going to be built. And you're going to find the same thing, I think, when you go to Tilsonburg. And I know it is a struggle to say we got to put up that cost. But any CIP application would require you to at least get to that stage. But hopefully, we're in August now, and hopefully, if you start the process now, by the time things are ready to build and it gets through, all of these things will be in process. And I'm hopeful that we can look at that.
Does council have any questions here? Councilor Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions and maybe a comment. I totally understand where you guys are coming from, trying to get things done and then paying astronomical amounts for it is kind of crazy in the end. But why can't our neighbor Tilsonburg offer something for less, but our hands are tied? So why, when we have people that are actually trying to? And I know it's a bigger story, and I don't need the
It's a big story.
The complicated answer that I'm going to get that won't make any sense to me anyways. But why can they offer it for $3 less a square foot? Why can they offer a tax break for 10 years? Why can they do all that stuff, but we can't? So when we have people that want to actually do something here, but we're kind of pushing them away, it just doesn't really make sense to me a whole lot when other communities can. So I guess it wasn't a question, it was just kind of a statement. Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that?
I could say, certainly, I don't think anybody can say that Tilsonburg would offer a tax incremental grant under their CIP. We, that requires a staff review of an application to go forward for council for approval. And if council decides to say, this isn't a brownfield, this is a new development, we're going to provide what is clearly a bonus outside of the municipal act. The bonusing provisions within the municipal act are a bit of a toothless tiger. So a municipality could do that, and they're just waiting for somebody to come in. But what we're, the way that DCs are calculated are in the items on the residential tax levy. So a detailed report was done last term, and all the data on our asset management, on the cost of supporting this growth goes in there. And if you don't appropriately calculate DCs, what happens is you're just burdening the residential tax base to pay for industrial or commercial growth later on. So that's the basic principle behind the DCs. Nobody wants to have high DCs. I'd suggest that ours are very reasonable. Central Elgin right now is reviewing theirs. I anticipate St. Thomas will have to review theirs as well as Tilsonburg. And those reviews will likely see us be the middle of the range when you consider fast-growing municipalities like London are 20 bucks a square foot. So I do think as, the quality of the data in our DC study, but again, we're researching it next year. It will be open for council decision. It's a council policy.
Really, we don't have all the information to answer your question or comment about Tilsonburg, or Councilor Rahi. But council will have the opportunity to look at DCs in more detail next year when council goes through the process. It's a lengthy process in setting up DCs. And once they're set up, we really can't change them. Okay, I had something else I was going to say, and I forgot what it was. But anyway, Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. Just so I understand, if a developer comes forward with a project and they want to build a building X number of square feet, do we use that build a building X number of square feet, do we use that concept in order to give the applicant an idea what the development charges would be? Or was it as stated that they had to go through the cost of a site plan development agreement and actually be very specific in what the project might be?
Heather.
So if I may speak to Mr. Clausen's proposal, Mr. Clausen met with myself and the town's planning and development technician, and we provided the development charge rate per square foot. We were provided a drawing estimate to give us a rough idea of how large the building is. We needed more information in terms of lot coverage on the property, how it was going to impact parking, stormwater management, and setbacks to lot lines, and we just didn't have all the information. I encouraged Mr. Clausen to set up a formal pre-consultation, which is no charge. We never charge for pre-consultation. But I did ask him to provide a more detailed plan. It doesn't have to be prepared by a professional engineer, but it does have to be accurate in the measurements so that staff can provide a thorough and accurate response for your development. And that was stated to Mr. Clausen at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Could I answer your question, deputy mayor?
Pretty much, so if a concept is brought forward, except for the final details of parking and things like that, it doesn't have to be developed by an engineer, as I understand it.
If I may speak, parking, yes, we have to see full parking layouts. Measurements must be accurate. We do encourage people, a lot of people don't have the capabilities to go out and precisely measure properties and do all the measurements that are required. I will say that almost all the developers, whether it be residential, institutional, commercial, industrial, that do meet with us, do end up hiring an engineering firm or even an engineering technologist or a draftsman to even just prepare a draft site plan so that staff can review and provide a comprehensive comments on it so that we can help them proceed with their development moving forward, so they know upfront, before they have put out any money in planning fees and building fees and any of the big engineering reports that may be required, they know upfront what is required of them, or whether we can't support the development based on what they're proposing.
So we do try to provide, I guess, a better conversation. Is there something we're missing there, Mr. Clausen?
Yes, well, when we met the other day, if I understand this right, like, I'm not, I'm here to work, like, I want to work with the town. That's what we're here for. We're not here to criticize each other, whatever. So I think when we met, she said that we needed a site plan, and then Connor, my son, while we were both there, and then we said, well, if we get a site plan, it's going to cost about $15,000. And she said, I think, if I'm correct, you said that if we can't make it work, then we can use it in the future, maybe somewhere down the road, you know? So I don't want to spend 15, 20, $30,000 in a site plan, and all of a sudden, we're not going to build because of certain things, because of, and now, I'll just say another thing. When I met Seifus, I don't know if you'll know Seifus from Tilsonburg. He's a fellow that I talked to there. And he said, he told me that we could have a 10-year tax deferment. Five years would be 50 percent, the second
Five years would be 25 percent.
And he said that has to go through to the town council, and they have to approve it, of course. But he said it was, it would probably work. And just the way he was presenting it, it actually sounded very inviting, because he was very open to any questions, anything that we had, so that we could work together with him.
Well, I'm sure we can work together, and we certainly would want to work together. And the proof of the pudding is in the eating, as they say, so we can have a lot of offers until we get to the point of, you know, actually doing it. Counselor DeRosie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to all the gentlemen here who came to take the time out of their day to have a conversation with us. I think having any type of open dialogue with our residents, whether they be businesses or just families, is crucial for good governance. In saying that, reading the memo that we did receive from the CAO, and part of the discussions we've just had, is that we are going to be looking into these DC charges in the coming year. So the question I have for staff is, to build on this conversation and to continue this conversation, can a community consultation with the businesses, per se, be part of that study that the town oversees?
It has to be part of that study. The delegation should be, like, there would be public meetings of all kinds when we deal with DC charges, so yes.
May I say another word? So most of our employees are from Elmer here. They live right in town in Elmer here. So that is, it's very convenient. They don't have far to drive, that doesn't cost them much for fuel to get to there and so on. Some of them ride bikes to work, so that's, it works out very well. And we do enough, we have enough room there to build. We have quite a bit of room left, about an acre and a half, probably. And so, and I like the town of Elmer. Like, I live, I just live outside in John Wais Line here, so it's an easy commute for me as well, like, five minutes. Out there, it'd be 15 minutes, but it'd be a little further to drive, but I'd love to stay here. What I want to do is I want to work with the town of Elmer, that we want to work together. That's what I want to do.
Great.
And the town of Elmer, you know the system, I don't. If I need something, I have to come and ask you, because I don't know how to go about stuff.
Well, we do want you to be here, of course, and we will do everything we can to accommodate what you do, what you're trying to do. So anyway, thank you very much for coming and voicing your concerns. And when we look at the DC charges next year, we'll probably see you again.
Your worship, can I say one more?
One more.
I do appreciate the time, absolutely, and I think that if we could have a follow-up item of possibly a meeting to discuss more of the roadmap, like you had mentioned, you were surprised by some of the questions we had, we don't want to surprise anybody. If we could open up some dialogue and have some type of meeting moving forward, I think it would benefit the community and benefit the councilors. We've put a group together that have a foothold in the community, and we want to maintain that foothold in a very positive way. And I think the one takeaway from this conversation should be that a follow-up meeting to have more dialogue on what we're seeing from our side. I think that will educate you guys, you guys can therefore educate us on what happens with some of our questions, and I think it'd be very prudent to move forward that way so that we can accomplish what we are asking for.
I think that's a very, very great idea. Thank you. Counselor Chapman, last word.
I just have one question for you, Mr. Geisberg.
What were your last words?
Do you have a designated representative for your group that we can contact?
We're just drawing straws at this point, and I had the short one, so.
Okay. So if you can establish something so that we can have better communication flow, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, we will work on something here, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for that idea, Counselor Chapman. All right. Let's move on to only a resolution to accept the president's.
Yeah, but the delegation of John Clausen and Abe Geisberg regarding development fee charges be received as information.
Moving on to second, or Counselor DeRosie and Counselor Chapman, all those in favor? And Kerry, thank you. Move on to consent agenda, item 6.1.
That the August 13th, 2025 consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 9th, 2025.
Moving on to second, or Counselor Barber and Deputy Mayor Barber. Anyone want to pull any of those out or discuss any of those at length? Counselor Raheem.
611, I think, is what I'm looking for.
Okay.
You?
Go ahead.
Just going through it, they're looking for better explanations, so they're asking what we want.
Yes.
What do we want?
I think staff has, I think I've already asked staff to respond to that and provide the information that they're looking for. Andy, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I think what we were thinking was, we have some significant items of negotiation ongoing right now with Malahide, and when we're there, we'd raise, potentially, that we want to arrange a meeting to have a sit-down. I'm hopeful that we can get to some point of conclusion with the other matters and then raise this one, because it's relatively minor, I see.
Okay. And certainly, a very positive development, so that's great. Anything else? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. On the same topic, it's gratifying that the township has accepted our invitation to talk, and hopefully, something constructive can come out of it.
Counselor DeRosie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on the same topic, is council able to receive a follow-up report to those discussions, just so we are kept in the loop of what's discussed and what transpires?
Are you referring specifically to this particular item, sir?
Yeah, so if, I think, I believe the CAO just said that the desire is to continue those discussions as part of negotiations, but I'm asking as council if we're able to receive some type of follow-up report once that discussion has transpired.
She will. Okay. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion. I'm going to wait till Deputy Mayor Barber wanders back to his seat.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Recalling the question on item 6.1, all of the items in the consent agenda, all those in favor? And that is Kerry, thank you. Item 7.1, manager of planning, oh, minutes received, no, we got that. 7.1, manager of planning and development to have a resolution.
And that the council of the town of Elmer receive report Plan 14-25 regarding the planning evaluation report, application for consent to sever number E44-25, and that the application for consent to sever E24-25 relating to the property legally described as part lots 32 and 33 South Oak and 33 South Oak, Elm Plan 145, known municipally as 11 and 13 Pierce Street, be supported in principle with the recommended conditions as reasons set out in the report, and that this report be forwarded to the Land Division Committee for its review and consideration.
Moving on to second, or Counselor O'Slash and Counselor Chapman. Heather, do you have a report on that?
Thank you, your worship. I'll try to keep this brief. Essentially, this severance is to subdivide under construction semi-detached residential buildings so that each semi-detached unit will have individual ownership. Properties located on the east side of Pierce Street, south side of Oak Street. That is shown in figure one, and figure two shows the proposed severance. Moving on to planning policy review, the proposed severance application is consistent with the provincial policy statement. It conforms to Elgin County's official plan. Both the current official plan as well as the adopted plan also conforms to the town of Elmer official plan. Moving on to the town's zoning bylaw, I noted in my report that this development received a minor variance in 2022, which is in force and effect. However, our team noted that for the proposed severance, that a variance is required because the one unit will be over in the lot coverage that is due to the severance. As well as we, the building department does not have any information on whether decks will be included on these homes. Therefore, a variance may also be required, which would be covered within one variance. So therefore, town staff are recommending that a minor variance be a condition of this severance. In terms of consultation, staff reviewed it, and staff have noted the need for a minor variance in the conditions for the severance. So in conclusion, planning staff have reviewed the application in terms of the provincial policy statement and applicable county and town of Elmer official plan policies, as well as the town's zoning bylaw. And based on our review, it's recommended that council offer support in principle for the application to the Land Division Committee, subject to the conditions that are listed in my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Council, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, and it is Kerry, thank you, 7.2, I have a quarterly financial summary. The treasurer's not here, so first of all, let's have a resolution.
That report Finance 14-25 entitled Quarterly Financial Summary Report Q2 be received for information.
Moving on to second, or Counselor Chapman and Counselor Raheem. And so, acting treasurer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we have before us is the Q2 financial statements for 2025. This includes information up until July of this year. The town is on track with capital projects, and we're proceeding well. Of note, Elmer is again seeing very high levels of building permit revenues, and all indicators are that high permit issuance will continue throughout 2025. As council is aware, we completed one land sale shortly after June, so that's not included here, and there's another one that's in the process of substantial sales. So those will be reflected in the Q3 or Q4 reports that come forward later. And with that, I'll try my best to answer any questions.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you, 7.3, Director of Operations, Town Hall Exterior Renovations Resolution.
That report Operations 12-25 entitled Town Hall Exterior Renovations Project Update be received for information, and that council authorize the tendering of the project as outlined in the report.
Moving on to second, or Counselor Chapman and Counselor DeRosie. Terry, you doing that one?
Thank you, worship, through you. This report provides a brief update of the Town Hall Exterior Design Project. This project is very important, as it will maintain one of the most significant buildings in town, the symbol of which, which is the town's logo, which we're currently sitting in as well, and it's illustrated nicely behind the mayor on the wall. Council previously approved the initial investigations and design for the project through a 2024 report. The conclusion of that report stated there would be a subsequent follow-up with the scope of work and a refined estimate. So we're at that point now. GEI completed the design investigations and have narrowed down the scope to include brick repointing and replacements on the entire building, rehabilitation of the exterior fire escapes, replacement of the slope metal roof on the clock tower, replacement of the Mansard flat roof, eve and slate roof repairs, and replacement of all the third-floor windows, which are in dire need of repair, or replacement, rather. And there are other miscellaneous works not listed on there, such as painting and different repairs, but that's the extent of the major repairs. Due to the height and extent of the work, perimeter scaffolding will be required around the building. The necessary scaffolding will carry a significant price tag. The engineer's estimate for the project is 851,000 total for the project, 40% of which is in general items such as scaffolding. For that reason, staff would recommend proceeding with the project with all items included. This will gain economies of scale for the project and save on mobilization and demobilization costs for future projects. Staff would tender the project as soon as the 2026 capital budget is approved by council, and a further tender or award report would be brought to council with the results. On that, I will do my best to answer any questions council might have.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you to Terry. Terry, people in the community may wonder why this particular project deserves a higher priority than the renovations or repairs to the Old Town Hall. Could you touch on that, please?
Yes, great question, through you, two members of council. It's, the third floor is in dire need of repair. I know many people haven't been up there, but when you get up there, it's in quite bad shape. The third-floor windows are
Quite literally falling apart.
And if we get a stiff wind from a certain direction, they literally blow open, and we have to go close them. So the facility condition assessment on this building has a lot of these items as needs to be replaced as a priority. If you see the outside, you can see it's quite tired-looking. On the inside, it's generally in the same state, so that is why it's in quite bad shape in some of the areas. A lot of these items need to be replaced sooner than later, and that's why it's justified now.
Counselor Raheem, or did you have a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up. So the priority that was established for this building and others maintains its status quo, would that be fair?
Yes, yes. Well, upgraded for sure, so any of the new windows
Well, upgraded for sure, so any of the new windows would obviously be major upgrades, but status quo for the metal roof would be replaced like for like. Any of the paint would be replaced like for like. We don't want to change the look or feel of the building, but replace a lot of the infrastructure that's failing.
Counsel Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Terry, I have two things. Can you tell the contractors that we don't want to buy the scaffolding? We'd just like to. And that being said, why do we have to use scaffolding instead of something like a genie boom or a man lift of some sort? I mean, there's massive ones that'll go, you know, a hundred foot plus in the air to do aerial work. That seems more economical to do a job like this, and I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, it's just more curiosity. Like, why would we set up all the scaffolding for them to climb up it compared to use a mechanical man lift that takes you up a hundred-plus feet that they build ten-story buildings with?
Thank you. Great question, through your worship. This is, I'm relying on the engineers for that. We did work with them to see if it could be done from a man lift or something like that. A lot of the locations are in very hard-to-reach places, such as on the backside of the clock tower itself. I know there's some quite large equipment that can reach around there, but we essentially want to fix all the brick around the entire building, do repointing around everything, and fix everything at once, instead of kind of piecemealing this and paying multiple times for scaffolding. So they're essentially working on the entire perimeter of the building, where I think at that, at that rate, it's easier to set up scaffolding once, address all the concerns, rather than try to float equipments, equipment to specific places to try to reach some of these locations. But we did ask and had site meetings, seeing if they could get to all, everything that they needed to address with different man lifts or booms, and they didn't think it could be done. That being said, if I could add just one thing, when we do go to tender this, if contractors have a different opinion on that and can do it with, with equipment, we would certainly be open to that for sure, and save on all those costs.
Okay, great. Counsel De Rosier.
Terry just answered my question, so thank you, Terry.
Yes, so just to touch on that, I mean, this was the, this is the engineer's estimate. So contractors often, when they're tendering projects, have excellent questions that maybe we didn't think of because they're experts in the field. We know what we're talking about as well, but sometimes they have a better way of actually addressing some of these concerns. So that would be brought up, whether the scaffolding, they could change it to using equipment, and they would price it accordingly, so.
Any other members of council? Counsel Oslach.
To Terry, what about my tree out front?
Through your worship, the tree would not be, would not be affected. We would, we will maintain the tree and try to prevent all the damages.
Well, in the clock tower, there used to be a blue spruce. We cut it down years ago. I think three years, four years ago. So I had replacement, so had fat Albert to replace my tree when with the old Town Hall was, brick was finished.
We will, we'll definitely note that, and I'll get the tree species from you, and we can get that replaced. Now, I might need to wait until, if they are going to set up scaffolding, wait until the project's complete, but we can look at the location and tree species, get that.
It's a fat Albert.
Okay.
Blue spruce, blue spruce. It only grows thirty feet tall. You know, it's really fat, and it's really blue.
That was a lot of information there, Counsel Oslach, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, that is Kerry, thank you very much. We have seven point four, Director of Operations Resolution.
That report Operations thirteen dash twenty-five entitled Plow Attachment Capital Budget Amendment be received for information, and that council authorize the capital budget amendment for the purchase of a new plow attachment.
Moving second, Counsel De Rosier, Counsel Chapman. Terry?
Thank you, your worship. I'll keep it brief. One of our trucks was damaged at the end of the plowing season, at the end of this plowing season. The damage resulted in the plow attachment, including the blade being bent, so the truck has since been fixed. This truck is very important to the fleet, and it's critical that we have it available for the upcoming plowing season. Staff have contacted four different vendors for replacement options. Several of the vendors were not really interested or would require engineering to affix their specific type of plow to the truck. London Drive Systems performs maintenance for Western Plows and has performed maintenance on this truck in the past. They provided a quote of twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight to replace the plow attachment, with a new plow attachment, lights, all the electrical required, so the whole, the whole kit. The price has gone up to the recent tariffs, and staff would recommend that the plow be approved to avoid escalating costs further. On that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Terry, I have a couple. I think it makes good sense to stay with the same brand. Western does make a good plow. My question is, is, or kind of question, when is the tentative plan to replace this truck? And do you typically, when you replace trucks, you typically order them new with new plows? In this scenario, it's 2016, so if it was to get traded in, but it has a 2025, would you ever consider ordering another truck but keeping this plow, plow mount to mount onto another one to exceed, to get the life expectancy back out of said plow?
Through your worship, to Counsel Rahi, we absolutely would. We would, we would look at if we did get rid of the existing plow, that we could utilize the existing attachment in some way. The plow itself is in good shape. I know it received some damage, but we tend to keep our fleet in very good shape. So it has a lot of lifespan left remaining, and that's why we, we wanted to fix it and get it operational again, rather than replace the plow, the entire unit. So number of years left, we generally try to keep maintenance in tip-top shape on these, so this one has a lot of life left in it. We do have a separate plow, full truck and plow attachment that is at the end of its lifespan that we will be going through in the capital budget further. So we're really trying to stretch this one and keep the maintenance up so that this one would last another five, 10 years.
Counsel Rahi?
And a follow-up to you, through Mr. Mayor, I know it's just a snowplow, but I like snowplows. Would you keep this one for a spare in case if there was another accident and the new one got wrecked, but this one was in better shape? Or what happens to the old one? Does it scrap, or do we have, does Elmer have a bone yard apart somewhere, as we should?
Through your worship, to Counsel Rahi, we would most likely look at selling it, but I guess that would be a decision when we, when we get to that point, if we would like to keep a spare just in emergency situations. But usually, when we look at replacing with new, we would look at putting it on the market and selling and using those funds for, for other equipment.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, to Terry. The offending catch basin that caused this damage, has it been modified to make sure it doesn't do the same thing again?
That is a good question. I'm not, I'm not certain I know which specific catch basin it was. I think these, it's been on the road a long time, so it may have not been just one specific catch basin. The catch basin would be repaired. There's many different types of catch basins out there, with open lids, with the curb inlet catch basins, that it can catch the corner of a blade and, and do damage like this. So I guess training is one thing that's come out of this, to kind of be a bit gentler on the equipment, especially which types of equipment. But the catch basin itself hasn't, hasn't been modified. I think this was just one of those things that it was a really tough plowing season. It was a long year, and this happened to catch it, catch a corner the right way, and, and some damage was done.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, that is Kerry, thank you. Item eight, new business in matters of urgency, do you have notice of motion there? I am going to withdraw the notice of motion, number of reasons, one being that council members have a number of committees that they're already on, and for the, you know, the sanity of council, I think it's, we don't need another committee to take your time. I'm not sure what the fundraising committee's overall purpose would be in terms of fitting in with, with the library expansion at this point. And I think there are other options out there for supplying a method for fundraising and a method for donations from people of Elmer. There have been a number of people who have already asked me, and I think a number of people have asked some of you as well, how do I fundraise? How do I donate? And I think that we can do that without having a fundraising committee, which would require a number of people from the community and a number of counselors to do this. So I don't want to overload council at this point, and I think that what I'd like to have happen, and I already talked to staff about this, if they would come back at the next meeting and give us some options and methods that we could use for fundraising and options and methods for donations, which would be a lot simpler and perhaps more effective and efficient than a fundraising committee. So I am withdrawing the motion. Item nine, reading of bylaws and proceedings.
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw forty-six dash twenty-five, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy division register and deputy issuer of marriage licenses, Heather Sacks, and bylaws forty-seven dash twenty-five, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy division register and deputy issuer of marriage licenses, Lisa McLeod, and bylaw forty-eight dash twenty-five, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on July ninth, 2025.
Moving second, Counsel Rahi, Counsel Chapman. Any comments from, seeing none, all those in favor, that is Kerry, thank you. Inquiries by members. Counsel De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm sure a lot of you have heard this week, there was an announcement regarding the development of the PowerCo plant, and I was just curious if, from that announcement, if we have any updates on the, for our new industrial park.
I think you cut out for some of that.
Oh, do you want me to re-say it?
Re-say it.
Sorry, if there were any updates on the marketing efforts for our new industrial park.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, I know, believe it was July, we were, there was two parties interested in it. We're still working with CBRE, who is essentially a premier kind of realtor for attracting businesses, but Investment Ontario is also looking at us. We still kind of struggle with some of the requests that we're getting are very large volume water users, so it's, it's trying to find that nice fit for the lagoon system, where we're not going to have somebody come here who would use, I think the last one we looked at would use half as much water as the whole town uses in a day. So we don't want that, that new water tower to be running at that capacity on day one when we turn it on. But yeah, it's certainly, it is successful, and we're still getting significant interest. It's bit by bit.
Any other inquiries by members? All right, statements and community reports by members, Counsel Chapman, and then Counsel Rahi.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say that we're, the Elmer Area Heritage Festival is getting closer, and we're at the point now where we're looking for volunteers for the weekend event. We are holding a volunteer orientation on August twenty-fifth at seven o'clock at the downstairs of the Legion, so if anyone would like to join us, we'd be more than happy to have you come out.
Thank you. Counsel Rahi?
I just wanted to say thanks to the Elmer Fair, the Elmer Agriculture Society for, for putting the Elmer Fair on again. I was there Saturday. I've never seen it that busy in my entire life of going there. It was quite incredible, and it was hot, but it was a lot of fun. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that put that on, and, and see you next year. Thanks.
Counsel Oslach?
Mr. Mayor, the Legion has the hundredth anniversary of the Branch Eighty-One next year. So it was founded in nineteen twenty-six, the same years the Dominican Commandant was formed. So we have a celebration all year.
So I'm hoping all of us will be there.
Yeah, yeah. You're invited. All counselors are invited.
Good, good, thank you. Anyone else? Reporter of the mayor's, really not a report, I just wanted to second what Counsel Rahi said, the Elmer Fair is back. I guess it's been back for some time now, but certainly this year was one of the greatest Elmer Fairs in a long time. And, you know, the Elmer Fair was part of my youth. For a long time, I was a volunteer at the Elmer Fair, and part of the executive, actually, on the Elmer Fair back in the seventies and eighties, which was a five-day fair and quite a fair to be seen in. It relapsed during the nineties and early part of this century, but certainly looking at it this year is phenomenal. So thank you to Elmer Fair. Any notices of motion? Meeting close to the public, resolution.
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at seven thirty-nine PM for the purpose of considering Chief Administrative Officer Report CAO Thirty-five dash Twenty-Five, Earth Shareholder Meeting, and that consideration of this item is close to the public pursuant to Section two thirty-nine, two F and I of the Municipal Act, as the subject matter pertains to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including recommendations for that purpose, and a trade, trades or science, technical, commercial, financial, labor relations, information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization.
Thank you. Moving second, Counsel De Rosier, Counsel Chapman, all those in favor, that is Kerry, have a brief recess, we'll meet. Thank you.